Yeah, he just started.
Okay, we're being asked to start the meeting. We'll call the select for me in order. We have a quorum. And I think Don and Brooke are on our way, so. We are up and running. I guess I started your roll call, but we're all here. Actually, I have to do that. And yeah, over to you, Ashley.
All right, so we will call the National Conservation Commission meeting to order. We as well have a forum. Looks like we're dismissing Linda at this point.
Good, great. Well, thank you very much, everyone, for having us here today. We are going to go through some scenario planning business. Okay, bit about the agenda. Before we get into the agenda, let me look at my notes and remind myself here. We checked and there are no planned emergency. Planned emergencies for this evening, right? Right? No, um, no tests of the emergency broadcasting system. So if the fire alarm goes off, it is real. We are in the state of an emergency here and everyone knows how to get out of the building. There are. Two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, seventeen of us here in the room. I'll take the front of the line. Vince will take the back of the line, right? We'll file out down the steps and we will muster at the opposite end of the parking lot should anything happen, right? We are not going to lose one of you this evening. No way, no, huh? Because we'll have to come back and do some work later.
I wonder where you're going with that.
Yeah.
Nobody can escape.
And Vince is at the back of the line.
Very much for having us here. We're going to scenario plan this evening. Anyone have a close connection to the United States Coast Guard? Or ever heard of Project Evergreen? The United States Coast Guard adopted scenario planning as their strategic planning process about fifteen years ago now. And they have what's called Project Evergreen. And the Coast Guard uses scenario planning because they have recognized the fact that that their world is constantly changing. The environment's changing, the people that they're saving are changing, the situations that their. Volunteers find themselves in is changing and it continued. If they plan for six one hundred year storms, they get six of those and they get four or five hundred year storms, right? So they started fifteen years ago with Project Evergreen doing scenario planning. And scenario planning basically takes a look at your best case scenario, worst case scenario, or nothing has changed. Nothing will change. So we've adapted that scenario planning into, we simply look at three scenarios. Not a best case or a worst case or nothing has changed, but three general scenarios. So this evening, we have scenario number one, scenario number two, and scenario number three. Okay, and all eventually what we're going to do is break into three groups and each group is going to spend. Remind myself twenty minutes. Each group is going to spend twenty minutes at each of the three scenarios. So if you're group one, you're going to start at scenario number one, but after twenty minutes, you're going to move to scenario number two. And after the second twenty minutes, you're going to move to scenario number three. When you finally hit the third scenario, you're going to find it's it's going to be a little bit more difficult to come up with new ideas or new things to say. Because your group, your your fellow members here may have already captured that, but you can always build on things, right? If someone captured it in another group, but they didn't necessarily capture the comments the way you would have. Sent them or written them down, then by all means, make your notes and put your notes up there. We're going to use post-it notes this evening. And some people ask, well, why do we use post-it notes? You know, what what's the deal with the post-it note? The post-it note's a very powerful thing to use in this kind of a process because. We've extroverts, we've been, right? The reality is me, I'm an extrovert. I process problem solve externally, right? If I'm trying to problem solve something, I'm going to talk to Matt and I'm just going to keep laying it on him and laying it on him and laying it on him. Not because I want him to solve that problem for me, but because I'm solving the problem as I'm talking. Introverts, of course, solve the problem internally, right? They're listening, they're taking notes, they're formulating their response. And when they've got it all put together and they're comfortable with it, that's when they pipe into the conversation and have something to say. Sometimes what happens is you run out of time before the introvert actually has the ability to step in and say. This is what I think, right? So the post-it note keeps we extroverts a little bit quiet, right? We're putting our notes down on post-it notes and while because we're quiet, the introvert can actually mentally process, right? And come up with some ideas that they'd also like to put down on paper. So that's the power of the post-it note this evening. I am going to ask you, you probably have brought your own pen. Do me a favor, use the markers on the table. Not because I love colorful markers, but because they show up on the post-it notes. So if I take pictures of the boards and my notes and what have you, I can read them. You write in pen and later on I can't read that, no matter how how big I blow it up. And one of the other very important things this evening is we capture it, right? Don't feel like you can't write something down or don't feel like, you know, you can't. Say something on, you know, on the post-it notes that you you really want to make sure is captured. You want it captured, write it on a post-it note. It's like a competition, right? The person, the group comes out with the most amount of post-it notes wins. Because honestly, that's how we get to a place ultimately that we need to be. Now, we're going to scenario plan in two hours. Typically with a group like of this size, we would scenario plan for an entire day. Because we would come into the groups, we would do a first set of notes, we would capture, we would come back together, we would talk about what we have, we would. Group the post-it notes into similar categories. We would determine whether or not we had some gaps, you know, did did we not capture this? Did we not capture that? We would go back through the scenarios again, capturing more notes. So it would be a much longer process than two hours. So I guess what I'm trying to say is. We're probably not going to get to the final conclusion in two hours today. Grab a seat wherever you're comfortable. We're we're probably not going to get to the absolute final conclusion. But we are getting ourselves or moving ourselves down the scenario or down the path closer to where we need to be in order to plan for the long term. Anyone have any questions, anything you'd like to discuss before we get into this? Anything you're not sure about?
Yeah, so we're limiting our conversation to just the GeoTubes are in place today.
We do not have to limit our, we put the scenarios up to talk about the GeoTubes, leave them in place or take them out, right? You throw, throw those ideas, throw those notes up on the board, all right? And again, because if you don't capture it here, then oftentimes people will come back a couple of months later and say, well, gee, but I didn't say this, right? Put it up there if it's a topic that needs to be discussed, okay? The other thing that I have next to each scenario is a rose above a thorn. Simply because positive and negative are just too divisive of terms, right? So a rose, a bud, a thorn, a rose is, you know, something that's kind of working, right? We've either it could be the communication, it could be a team of people, it could be a stakeholder group, it could be, you know, local neighborhoods, it could be a scientific process, it could be. A a piece of construction, a modification, a an agreement, a contract, right? Those things that are currently working in that scenario or things that could be very positive. A thorn are those things that are javinous every now and again, right? Catching us from a community standpoint, catching us from a financial standpoint, catching us from a scientific standpoint. Or a time management standpoint, right? So capture those thorns. And a bud is an opportunity, right? Where is the opportunity? Where does the opportunity lie in that scenario? What could it do for us? Or what could we come up with? What idea might you have? That is a potential opportunity and you don't have to have all of the answers, right? That's this isn't about, again, coming out with all of the answers in two hours. But if you throw what you think might be a good idea or an opportunity up there. Once it's down, then we're going to flush through that soon, right? Maybe not tonight, you know, maybe not next week, maybe it might be next month, but at least it's captured and we're going to flush through the idea. Okay? So the rose, the bud, and the thorn. Yeah.
So if we like one of the scenarios, what we would like to see that adjusted, we write that in.
Yeah.
Like if we say we like scenario two, but with, you know, slightly different, we put that down.
Yeah, yeah, you got the base, the basis of the scenario there, but that scenario could be enhanced if we added this or we did that. Right? And the thorn, this might stand in our way if we try to do this or this. Or if we leave the scenario as exactly as it is, this might stand in our way. But this is going to be good about it. Thoughts? Other questions?
When we did this previously, we had staff involved. Should we have staff involved?
Steph's here to answer the technical questions that you might have.
To be involved as well.
No, um, Vince is going to help Nikki facilitate the third scenario group. But Vince is helping Nikki because we're training Nikki to be able to do these projects with us. Vince is wearing two hats tonight on top of a seventy usually.
Being the back of the fire statement.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
Uh, you call these breakout groups, but is this an individual activity? Are we talking and then determining our post-it notes?
Right, you're going to get your, go into groups one, two, and three. You're already in your groups. When you stand up at the scenario for the first five minutes, it is going to be an individual quiet activity, right? For five minutes, put as many, or for two minutes, put as many rose things up there as you can think about, positive things. For two minutes, put as many thorns up there and as many buds up there. And then together you can talk about this and, you know, build off of something that someone else said, but in twenty minutes, we're going to move to the next scenario. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Absolutely. If we actually get to the point that. It's before seven o'clock and we have time, we're going to have each of the facilitators, myself with one, Kate has, no, Kate has one, I have two. Vince and Nikki have three. We'll have each of the facilitators kind of wrap up what's been said and you all. May say, you know what? We're gonna go all in on scenario X. With a few modifications and that's really where we'd like to be. And I'm. And. We kind of, we have to figure out how to do that. Because I'm going to ask a point of order. So somebody get out their Robert's rolls. You're both now in a public meeting, so. If I ask you each as individuals to put a dot up on a scenario that says I like this one best, technically you're choosing. Can you do that in this type of a workshop meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, as individuals, you would.
I know I asked for clarification from town council as in our conversation as to what exactly we were allowed to say and do, but I didn't. See that communication come back just to make sure we don't get into trouble.
Okay, so what we'll probably do is push off, right? Putting your dot on, selecting one, two, or three. We'll let you muddle that over because we don't want you to. We don't want either one of your boards to feel that you've gotten, you know, that we have a Robert's rolls problem because that's simple. We're not going to get into trouble over a red dot. All right, okay, um, so. Group one, Matt, Seth, Mark, is Linda. Not Linda, Linda's still downstairs, okay? So Matt, Seth, Mark, group one, so you're at scenario number one. Grab your post-it note and your marker. Group two, Jason, Brooke, Ian, Joe. Scenario two, you're going to start back here. And group three, Don, Malcolm, Ashley, and Michael. We'll start with scenario three back here.
My friend.
And I'm sorry. All right. Yeah, good. All right. Are we there? All right. It is now seven sixteen. And we're going to take five minutes to do roses. So these are positive things in your scenario. So scenario. Whatever that is, right? I put up five, ten years, you define that time. Develop the whole way you're planning. So it's why it's positive. Workshop, what that is, yeah. Modify post-it notes or whatever your challenge is. Five minutes.
Potentially definitely or some longer term here with say five or ten. This is our protection scenario. Untitled, you should also maybe be certain the way it's funded now.
Okay, we're seeing that this actually gives us a little bit of time to plan. Everybody else thinks that this is a great scenario. Okay?
Yes.
What, besides giving yourself time to plan, what else might be positive about this one? I think maybe planning time might also give you time to find them.
Yeah, I was going to create more time as an opportunity.
Right, yeah, absolutely. Now, if they're left in place for a defined period of time, um, there becomes a maintenance.
Yeah, I'm filing them up.
Does, do the opportunities or the. Issue you might encounter, do they change based on what this period of time might be? Well, that's your decision, right? Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, just, I mean, if it's five to ten years, what are the positives and negatives? If it's ten to twenty years, what are the positives and negatives, right? I think that one of the things that any period of time does to you is that we're all, I mean, you're right, we don't have so much time when we have. On this speeder, but there's going to be a change of leadership and people and. What keeps everyone on in?
This scenario now, so.
Okay, we're in three minutes. Yes.
Yes, something that would require additional. Yeah, exactly.
Up there.
Something to explore.
Here that, you know, one of the quirks might be, you know, how do we define what owner means?
They're just following this scenario. And you have to. Unfortunately, but. No, I know that. And I'm not sure that would be a definite thing, but I understand.
So the honor of the sponsor that party. Other than just the mind. Just to have to build on your own.
We go to the next one.
So these are like. The things that are in the way. There are roadblocks that if we could clear them or resolve them, that it might become a better scenario. They trapped from the good parts of the company, you know? Those kinds of.
What are the things that ideally you would like to say?
Has to stay in that.
That's like a long heart, like a long. It's a plan or a defined period.
What is being discovered? But I'm just thinking, I could go thirty or forty years.
And realistically. Yes, well, of course, remember, we're only a group, it's not your group or your group. And so the other groups are going to need to interpret your post.
Oh, no.
And you think you have to. What would that entail?
The first part. Hundred and twenty all the cubic yard now, it's gotten crazy. We got the road. Well, we caught, we caught four. More positive thoughts, Matt? They were just a kind of. I worry, I guess this could go on to the other one. In all the scenarios that we could figure out. Right, but we have more good ones there. And they're going to get some stuff. I sent that pictures the other day of. Of what they're proving. So much like. Dog into the sand, the hard armoring and then they start, you know, throw bags, which aren't even like throw bags anymore.
And is it something other than? Out of this scenario or opportunities within the things that are going right to kind of build upon this and enhance it, oh, better. Make it work better than that.
An opportunity for me now, if I let me back in Wisconsin. You can have a drink.
When it comes to. Okay, so that's, that's one, right? That's the thorn, yeah, everyone's. I'm not defining as you are. So what's moving behind it, maybe that's one of the thorns. We actually have to define what. Got that one?
There was just like. I think of the whole. The neighbors, if they if they agree and they're willing to get work, they're willing to, you know, give the land, it's there for the road and all that. That's a huge one. And we're not doing a thing, it's every single one, you're not fighting with everybody.
It's starting, don't be that nice.
Yeah, we know if we do some version of this, we'll get it mostly like, you know, and I think I'll ask the public and maybe have a public game. Over here, maybe there's a veteran in between, I don't know. But I know if we do somebody else, we're not, we're going to fight every single step of the way. And then what we've been dealing with for forty years will go for another twenty years. So and a great mental and physical factor.
Do you really want now a successful higher? So I think you have a lot of things. Exactly, because every one's culture becomes very different, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so. Our. Our. Spire. Such a complex. Spire. Is it right now? Very, very. The. Perfect. The project doesn't have any active. When it's. Or. But. Or. Where. You're able to free do the. And. Take change. Some of that. This one. Coordinating. Turn it better. And. A lot. Of. This is. How we. Know. Well, the other side of it is we. As you guys thought. We love. You. That's. I can think. We think we tried to fix that. You know, we're trying to fix that. That was. I don't know. We would. We would. That was. Yeah. Or that. Yeah. Better support.
Yeah.
Say there's one more. Well.
The state. Average.
I like. We're.
About that real. But I'm quite not so. And maybe. Here. And then. Call. That. You know.
And this, that could end, that could. That, some of this can go for any of these, any of these three, you know. Just we all land on it, but it's the same. Town hall, the same thing.
So. I don't.
Or. Our. Stay. We'll be like.
What is.
No. Turns out. We're not sure.
There's. But be on the right. What I'm. What. They. They.
There was. There was.
They're triggered. Move to the. National.
You know. So. Pushes. And.
What very important.
Yes. One.
Okay, so what is the. What's the. Most important thing in that? Resource involvement. Because. Whatever. Right? It's. It's an issue. But what is the opportunity? Is there opportunity to. Change the standards? Development standards? All around. And then. Is there any final thing? Opportunity? Want to clarify. For the end of the day. I have to say. Another. Help me. Get my. Down. Mr. So I get paid.
Yeah, that's why you get the big bucks.
Oh, yeah.
You live in the real world and you get the big money. Fantasy island out here. Volunteer. Pay some type of stipend that's not even. It's actually probably better to volunteer than pay taxes on this side of. Good. And I don't mind the money. And that, I could say that's for. All sides. Of this. That's half time. Yeah. You know, if you can figure this out, it's gonna help everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm. I was seeing that rose. Yeah. Well, I have to do one. You almost. You gotta double mine. And talk about the. Expansion. Make sure. The.
Well, that's. Thing. Opportunity for a good.
Well, we could have been. Um, I think that's sort of. The. But maybe it's not.
You know, the sand.
I asked. He's. He's. He was talking about the expansion. I mean, that's what they want. But we're not, and we're not gonna get some of this other stuff unless we do. Right. So, you know, and we're not fighting everyone step away unless we do. My. Nice. I spent it over here, but I don't. Just never allowed to put dots on this. I think that says, but who knows? Yeah. Um. Yeah, and definitely is a problem. Yeah. It's also our. That's what we dead. Is where. Maybe not really lucky, but. People say.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we can pick.
It's time to move.
Yeah.
So we're just gonna rotate clockwise. So scenario one's going to two, two for three. Three with one. Right. Three with one. Those, those are good bet nots. All right, folks. There you go. Leaving you in good hands. Gonna move over here. All right, hello, everybody. Have their posted notes. Hello. Morning, us. You're going to make this. I hope. All right. That's our. Absolutely. Absolutely. Take up your mission, everybody. We'll get the other audience from the other. What do you deal? So. The. Build on those. I will do everything that I can. But if you have any questions. I'm. We've been having conversations like about a decline. Oh, you're gonna build on me? What is a decline period? And it's like something. We put a five to ten year there. Maybe it's ten to fifteen. But. Realistically, let's say if it's twenty five to thirty, you can't. A lot of times. Higher spray thing. Actually. That. That's. Even there, like. Well, what it. The. Define. Um, that's what we plan. We also. So. But it's. That's. Why I'm finding a home. This is for. On the line to the. Some. Words. Define. So. I know. The market. I see your ability. But roses. Good thing about this scenario. Difficult thing about this scenario. And opportunity. What do you give a scenario? Maybe you're good to see some days. So. In place of that. Left. But I'm here to take your. Road. By the door. That's. What? Last group.
I'm looking at. I'm.
There. When you go there. That's more of a. For. My. My. The. The. I don't know how.
They're starting. They're almost now. Basically. It's. Yeah. Okay. So I get some. From what. Yeah. We're. You know.
Yes. Okay. That's. Or. Um. So then you're. You're somewhere in between. So you're. So.
Four. Four one two.
Yeah. Yeah. So I wanted to beat them in. And. Fund them privately and. And just like. Like. And the. They want. Of course. You need. Something.
On. And. Really. You know. Now.
Well, we. Another. For. Is. Yeah. The. Going. What? He would want. He wants. It's. And. But that. Whoever it is really needs to provide the direction. So. How? I'm not. You know. What. Complies. With. Except. Or. But we that. Can. I decided to make sure that. That's a thorn.
Always. Is this for. The money? Or the.
That's not cheap. But it doesn't get any cheaper either. Right? No. I mean, that's all the infrastructure in the country.
You know.
We.
There's. The person. That.
Yeah.
Again, so they're already.
Well, there was a look at this.
Well, that was one of the roots. Right or there was, you know, basically we had the block. Homeowners already in there. Yeah, we're more heavy. I think that will enter.
Yeah.
It's it's they are making so long. You develop a homeowner plan is the homeowner and the land or it's property owner plan. I was saying as we probably like it was like because each one has a move schedule.
It'll be different. If they're at the bridge, they're up near the little engine reaches. We need to get that rolling in, but they must be able to take our house down.
Right, right.
They have to be gone first.
So we have the opportunity there to develop. So the opportunity would be to develop specific homeowner plan.
And I also find.
Not a one size, one size. Yeah. Oh, you're writing it? Okay. There we go.
He's concerned.
Yes. And I'm actually had a long day. I'm gonna add to the bottom of that. Not one size fits all.
They don't. It was on the other side of what the likely degree would be. And he's like, he was fortunate enough to own a property out where he don't do.
I want. But his world was completely different than someone else's.
What is important?
And not everyone thinks that way, right? Thank you. I fail in Europe. What else do we have here gentlemen? Um. And is everything on the same timeline? We said, you know, to develop the timeline are, you know, the roads on one timeline, the homeowners, the property owners, the simple timeline, the geotools are on a timeline. Sand replacement is on a timeline, right? So are each of those segments, um, what were those?
And the only thing is, is we did this one. And this one is for the. We need to get days of.
Okay, so what's the opportunity for the land scenario? The one is something you pick apart, three good parts. And our way to take back the base of what is the opportunity in that land scenario? Because two talks about time and it doesn't talk about time as funding. One talks about developing. That pulls both of those scenarios together.
But you can say. There's something that says here that.
That's use. No, 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 because you're you're right. But we need to think how that has to respond. So capture that, you know, you can have that. Change the scenario to plus by the time. Yeah. Flux and what's real. So is there, she picked us apart scenario part in a way that you take literally take parties. Correct the current party. Say, yeah, there was something there.
Yeah.
So that anybody some party.
And we just figure out. And the other part is that it may not be. Small.
It may not be able to.
Operation.
Yeah.
That was.
So what are the other? Something about.
And then your demos and then the heavy.
Fire. If there were any part of this. What?
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly. Uh, not a great capturing, but let's capture those on. They were starting kind of like these. Talk about. Into that. We've been putting.
Yeah, this is what we've got. This one.
A lot of like. There's a lot of. So what other I changed, you know, like. To be right enough to fight with the property owner fighting. Well, that was anxiety actually. And you don't agree with that part. You have some, yeah, you have some, if you agree. According to your study. Let's think about that dialogue. Is there a way to actually. They say, what if there was radiation in the population? As long as five, ten years. I want more.
Then, yeah, so what you were right. Extend the ease point, because the cost is going to be higher than. By the foundation fund. I would go to. I would go to.
Some of it isn't. Foundation. Isn't there? So there's that you've done.
Over. Maybe only showing you.
Well, you know. And you have the status ability usually. Well, so I mean, that's a thorn, right? That's that's a big thorn. This is gonna, this is the source of money, but you really don't have the people who are going to have questions.
Trucked out. It's it's. The lens are way down.
So then.
Extract.
You know, now if you actually. Yeah, the availability is. Sprite them. It's all ready. So the reality. Of what any of you can stand as their structure wiring. Sam. Or if you. Man, I could do it despite the open location. Now on a roll, now there are first design thinking. You know, this. If he does it. Well, some of it. Lot, I guess.
Thursday.
Right. Yeah. But it's probably so high. I'm hoping to go number.
They're left to either letting nature take it for the course or.
Now that we've just turned to. I don't think that's a.
Is it a twenty? Five, ten year scenario, a whole new scenario. And it gives. And then one to five. The thing that's. For me that I would. Some people.
Yeah. And what's probably like, I'm trying to say. And I was. So.
Boy, how are you?
Because you want to see the money now, like, and I should have again. Young, young. You need. This is the one. We thought.
You could.
Oh, that's right. All right.
One egg.
Notes, folks, so why?
Very special. Me one.
Now. Now remember that. Okay.
Yeah.
Hello. All right. Thank you much. Good. It's a good question. Yeah, I'm still very. Nothing. You are now the scenario. Now. But this. You're the last group to work on scenario. When we wrote out the scenario. That's interesting. Was instead of. As a pointer. Because we realized that. You know, we've been taking. We define. It might not be five, ten, if I had ten. In the reality. By the private. If it was. So it's really. Really. Like you will start saying, we've placed it for thirty years. Well. Well, really. So. So. Roses. The. People want to. It's it is a plan. It's a bit more desirable to be. I know where where the geodes exist in there. Some activity. Feel free up there. You know, if I can. The sand. But sand is also. Not readily available all of this time, so it is.
I guess that now, but.
So. Good things about leaving the. So that they feel. Period. Developing. Land, property. Um. Also, the opportunities. Who's going? Who installing be the responsible? Put the one days that. Whatever. Is that a party? Discussing off which one they're not redefined or enhance. Um, so that we definitely have that. After multiple people. That we're gonna. Yeah, we have a couple that are. Kind of try. Post them on top of each other or connect them. It gets messy, but it's. Also defined, as we also said, that this plan is going to have a timeline for, do you think? Right, it's timeline for sand replacement. It's a timeline for. And the property owner is likely to have a different timeline, which would be.
When you're talking, I'm just reading the present. Now, if you stand.
This is, this is talking about leaving the geoderm. If you would like to add the extension of geodes. That's an opportunity, you can put that up there and it can be the step.
Controversial.
I like that. Absolutely.
This is scenario one and a half.
We've been talking about the fact that we really do have scenario one and a half going on here, right? That there is an opportunity to blend a couple of the pieces of these scenarios.
Yeah, I have the same.
Yeah, if you. Your. And and where there are. Your next groups and stories and opportunities from the other scenarios. You know, what really. Right, and you write them again.
You should.
Those. That there are some things that could actually be answered in. You know, all three scenarios.
Okay. Some people. Yeah, yeah. Right. These are kind of.
I think you were other.
Probably all, yeah. Significantly.
I was busy listening. So that might be in somebody's mind, maybe the. Old experience. Extended. Yeah. I think we have to probably put. Probably marked it up, but I did have. Extension. You know, the agony. I always call it. Yeah. That and I also. That was my plan, all of the problems more. People wanted to know. Funny, there's this. Really. Uh, so. And you think. That's interesting because. Yeah. Because the next. I mean, it really is probably an opportunity, but then the next. You know. Yeah.
But that was. That was. When it was. Trigger. Right.
Yeah.
Forty eight. Forty eight or fifteen. You get that. Also doing it.
Yeah.
A lot. Yeah. It just. It just. That is.
Kind of.
Doing this. Comms. True. Actually. Somebody. Right. That was our. That was very.
Well.
Nobody tried.
Or the downstairs. Does. Well, and you're also stuck because what they are right now.
On the way back.
And. Standing. For where. Charge.
I don't know.
Do you stop in the. Do you continue all the way through swamp and then hit up on the other side?
And the way those sort of things still. That's a valid.
Well, that's the way you're. That's why. Actually. Now, if I can, if I may. What was the stuff earlier was that this project, right, just define what the project period is. And it's probably a little bit larger than what a project is. And. It's to develop the acceptable standard model of all of your decision making. Being they can honor immediately. No, no. Not your. But that's why. Yeah.
I put one in God. Well. Right. You could be happy donating. Just. It could be. Have a nonstarter.
Yeah.
Is anything else?
So we're moving. I started saying what. Then develop for the owner. And there. We don't want to. That's just. Right?
You're just. Success.
You don't want to determine that. But still. You have a road. Or. So you have to be put together and then everybody. And maybe there's opportunities. There is a time. And that. Maybe it's different timeframe somewhere, so there might be. It's like my. Hold the blog. After. After that. But you believe it actually. Yeah, right. 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 They.
They're gonna get above.
That. In.
Seventy six.
Not. Different. Right, yeah. Like. Starting. Probably just laughing. What is that here defining? Wine or like in the best.
It's like.
So. Let's. Let's see. Powers. Perspective.
So then.
You know, what with your.
It's more defined.
She bought. She bought a new car before my son was born because we realized that.
All of them.
Took out. And then. Or something like that. So I said, everyone. So you've set. Basically. No. And then.
Continuing the.
You're, oh, see, you don't sit in the back seat because you got some. What person? Yeah. Yeah, so you know, basically. You're developing on your land. And you got. Having to start at that time. That's the other point. Less and less. Coming to things. They're not. So like. Not.
Yeah.
You basically say, you know what? I'm done. Keep trying to do this anymore, although I feel really. So. Is that an? I mean. Talk through. Are you talking about?
Yeah, I'd like to say.
But do you, you know, should be someone in some of the. Are we?
Oh, so this.
None stands. We can't. Yeah. You're ready. We're ready. Okay. Okay, we are doing very good. Six, oh, three. Four. Right. Kate, how are you doing?
I think we're good.
Oh, yeah.
We've come to our natural end. All right. Yes.
Thank you. Don't.
Oh.
Where's the? That's where things were.
Morning.
The people.
And they. She's like.
How's the candle world? We guys still doing that?
Yeah, we just. Took on the wow in it and the way Elka is.
I'm sorry.
That's big. We have Murray's Talk Ridge. We have forty five Sur side. We have.
What's next?
Alan variety, although maybe not for long because the business is up for sale. Um, a couple other smaller accounts. Sping like that.
Well, to get into those. I am like middleman around.
Yeah, no, we only do wholesale custom. Where is at this point, so it's all like sort of.
You're doing, you're not doing retail right now.
Only December delay, just just for. Just for buying.
I kind of create the demand a little bit.
Yeah.
Get this.
Yeah, it's also like you can sell your product at a higher price at retail. But it's so much work. You have to maintain inventory, you have to have a store, you have a online store, you have to. Ship stuff, you have to.
You're shipping. Yeah, stuff animal.
Yeah, you're shipping heavy. You have to assume, you have to. Not assume, you have to project what the market is gonna be. You have to make sure you don't create too much seasonal stock, like you make spring candles and Christmas. It's not.
Yeah, open furniture.
And it's a very.
What's. You were all in. All ended up in each of the scenario groups. So would someone like to volunteer to just? You know, give us some thoughts around the the discussion that occurred in this, in your scenario groups, right? You can talk about one scenario specifically. You can talk about all of them together, just some thoughts that you have. Everybody, not all at once.
Of our group, I'll make a motion for Brooke to talk for us. Right. Unanimous.
That's like being volunteered to take meeting minutes. Not gonna happen.
He was a sprinter in high school.
Well, I'll say one thing, I found it interesting as I moved around the room that. Uh. Things that people could write the same thing and see it as a rose or a thorn. Or the the same idea depending on your perspective. So I I find that interesting. There's no, there isn't clarity. About. What's what is a new scenario? You know, the the part of the con of the new scenario. Um. I love thinking about the buds. Uh, I think we we. We spent a fair amount of time finding the buds. When we could and thinking about like when you wrote something. Was it really a rose? Was it really a thorn or was it a bud? Because. As we talked about in the group, our thinking was all around what each of us were writing. I don't know.
Can I add something? I I think if I would have started differently, I might have not have. Because I did scenario, we did scenario one last, so it was all kind of done for us. And that is one of my least, walking into this is one of my least favorites.
What about walking out of it?
But now doing the third one, then I was, I don't know, I was more open to it.
Okay.
But I wonder if I started here coming in with my. My bias already.
Oh, okay.
If I would have. It it's a scenario where you started that.
Okay, well, then that's, let's think about that. Um, and and like think about that a little more deliberately. Did did you find that as you moved from one scenario to another? That some of your preconceived notions were changing or shifting? Or are you just steadfast in it was what I feel? And in all of those scenarios, this is just still my issue.
Well. Um, I would say, speaking for myself, can I imagine I'm not alone. It drives somehow what a complicated subject.
That it is. If it were easy, it'd be done already. You wouldn't be here.
Well, you know.
Right?
The older I get, the better I am at stating the obvious.
Yeah. I'm just more direct, maybe. Um, anybody else thoughts? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, without. Anybody taking an opinion about what scenario they think is best. It's clear that scenario one has the least roses. Because it's sort of a very finite scenario. Scenario two has the most buzz because it's a very flexible scenario. And scenario three has the most thorns because it's a very unpredictable scenario. So I don't know if that means those are bad or good. But it's it's sort of influences where you're putting your time and effort into the planning process.
Both and like a scientist, you might be, are you one?
Yes.
Everything, yeah. Black and white. I did not know the answer to that question. Okay, now, one of my observations was that your two different boards and and honestly. Unless I look at a list of, I I'm new to the groups, right? There are two of you that I, three of you that I met a year ago. But I can't off the top of my head know what group you're representing unless I actually look at a list that has your title there. Um. Unless there was a lot you were holding back. I was getting a lot of the same comments from everyone. Maybe you have more in common than you even think you do. Or not? I mean, what do you think about that? I I couldn't see the difference in the two groups, so.
I I think we all have in common that we want to do the best thing for Nantucket and and that area of the island. We all genuinely want that. I think it's difficult to. Our terminology, like see the forest through the trees in this case, as suggested how to do that.
Our terminology like see the forest through the trees in this case, as suggested how to do that. With a lot of kind of noise in the background. That isn't always correct on, you know, either side, kind of trying to sway you. For ultimately getting on the same page. If I ask you. I think that's great. If I ask you right now to say, to give me examples of the noise. What's the noise? Well, I, I think in some cases there's. In any case, there, there can be extremes on both sides, but I think. It almost makes. Our board seem more polarized because there's entities in the community that are so polarized and vocal. Um, again, kind of on both sides of the spectrum and to realize that. On each end of the spectrum, you will not please those two groups, but have to ultimately meet in the middle. Um, for the average.
And specifically just in the last two days, then hit the.
Bombarded.
Bombarded with the stuff we didn't need.
Right, letter, letter, letters and dueling.
That's what I was gonna say, it was like, these are the facts and these are uncontradictive facts, that was one side, and the other side is saying. You know, and, and that, and that's that the geodes are, you know, are the worst thing ever and it's gonna be end of the world. And the other side is saying, well, gee whiz, you know, the geodes aren't, you know, there's been no, if nothing has happened, it's been wonderful. And so we, you know, so it's a full side, that's what I'm thinking, when you guys are saying that, you know, that's what we're hearing right now and. And neither of those are taking into consideration all the other things that town has to deal with.
And very rarely do we hear from impartial individuals in the middle ground. To actually take the time to sort through it, they're not. Doing that, and I understand, but like that's. Kind of who we need. Yes, that's the folks you don't hear from and they're the folks you need.
They're the people that we just started to hear from.
Yeah.
Now that it's like imminent, but it's like, it, like, it, it takes the.
It took the, this is real, this is really real, yeah.
So I would say, I'm guessing scenario one got the most boards because it feels to me like more of the same. It's not a significant change from what we've all been living through. At least in the, in the, in the ways. Been playing out that scenario, right? Feels more like. We like, this is just gonna keep the same. Battleground going. Indefinitely is a scary word for me in that. However, I do think there are opportunities to do that scenario differently and that's the thing that I realized. In front of that. Um, that. Different people, different voices, different plans, different accountability. Could make that scenario very different from more of the thing.
Yeah, there's progress to be made in the middle. There, there's true, you mentioned the extremes, right, there's progress to be made in the middle. There's no doubt about it, because anytime anyone, regardless of what the conversation is, is on the extreme. Converting the extreme to feel any differently than the way they feel is. Pushing a rock uphill. Right, it, it just is, so you gotta get into the middle and make the progress, what other, where, what other noise? When the noise that gets in the way, what is?
Yeah, I don't know about noise per se, but the challenge is that. Government meetings are a very inflexible process and particularly the Conservation Commission, I would say more so than the Select Board, has a very. Specific charge and a very. Inflexible procedure that we are required to do. Um, so there's not necessarily opportunities to do things like this where consensus or scenarios are discussed. And at the same time. The Nantucket Concom is the busiest Concom in the entire state by far, like three times busier than any other. Concom, so we really don't have the time and bandwidth to. Deal, deal with this.
It's almost, it's its own, it's its own time commitment just for the, for the one issue.
Yeah, while we were talking about that, I, that, I guess maybe that's part of also what we were talking about when we said. Like who's next? You don't have the ba, you don't, if you don't have the bandwidth now for the subject like this, then it continues to move, right? For all of you, it continues to move, but at some point, you're probably not gonna be here anymore. So like then where does it move? Does that, so what's the opportunity there? Right, what, what door can you open, what opportunity can, can you develop or create? To. Because again, I didn't hear a lot of. I've worked with boards before that were two or three from different agencies and I did, I, you know, very nearly had to hop up on the table in the middle of the room, right? To calm things down and, and just. But there wasn't a lot of dissension here, I think there's more agreement than there is dissension, so how do you get it into a space? Where it's not confined by. You know, some of the things that hamper getting things done in local government. Can you, you can put it in, you can put it in a committee space, you can put it in a workshop space. You can, you know. Or you can just simply make a decision. This is the way we're going. I think in this scenario where we have, like Seth said. The Concom follows the State Wetlands Protection Act in our local bylaw. We are a regulatory commission, it's. Pretty black and white our role. Um, and maybe would need to be more workshop-y, committee type setting. To allow. That space and time. Absolutely.
But I think.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
I think when a collision like this occurs, you gotta look at. One side's going to be making the decision and the decision ought to be made by the select board. They supposedly have the best interest of the island then. In mind. And they have to say, look, this is what we'd like to get done, how do we get it done?
Just going back to the extremes, um, social media has some, some extremes too, like Facebook will get, get going on this subject and. With, with not a lot of facts on, on the individual.
At the end of last year, when we were finished with the design thinking workshop, the first thing that I did was start to follow your Instagram pages. And Twitter pages and Facebook pages from here on the island and not just yours. But all of the groups that are around, um, and you. Again, social media has been a blessing. And a curse. Right, in, it's been a blessing to, to all of us, not just the island for everything that it's given us, but it's also created some challenges. A rose and a thorn. Yeah, rose and a thorn, yeah, yeah, it has, but again, that's that noise, you gotta get away from the noise.
Yeah, that said, I don't think it influences a whole lot. Um, uh, uh, on the Conservation Commission level for sure, and I'm sure the select board level is.
Yeah, you have a job to do, absolutely. Any response to the previous comment about. You know, the select board is. Your decision, right, you have one board that's basically looking and saying, this is your decision.
I would respond, I, I think, I think we have, you know, we have, and we've been, you know, sort of. Castigated for it, I, I think we have, we have said this is a path we'd like to go down for these following reasons and we've extracted. These benefits and these are the things we're trying to avoid, we've, we've done that, you made those votes and done that, but we've still, we've still been in a standstill. And I think, and I think the standstill is partly because. Everyone is, is, is so sort of busy and how do you get to it, I, and like you guys said, how do you do it out of meeting? And how do you, how do you get to the level of conversation that you have? You need to get to make sure that you've covered everything, I don't think we ever get there, if I had to go in between, I would go. Like I don't like the idea of five or ten years, I think it should be based on triggers, if there's something wrong that's happening, we need to act more, more quickly. So I wasn't happy kind of with exactly how this was laid out, but I think it's. You know, but it brought us the discussion points and it got us to think for, for the both sides, I think.
I just. Sorry, I just have a kind of question to you back on that, Matt, I. I wonder if. The two groups would have made more progress if. There wasn't a private entity pulling some strings because we've. We were seeming. To get motion and then it was like, nope, end all, so. I think maybe removing some of that might help for the town overall planning. Even though of course that like impacts the funding available, at least in the short term, but. Help with planning progress. Can we make more progress by removing kind of the private entity? Or entities from. This aspect of like the overall town planning and I don't mean like ignore all stakeholder. Um, opinions, but as far as. Partnerships and. Maybe that's been more negative than positive. In the current scenario, so removing it, removing the private entity from the tactical plan. But not from the process. Yes. Right, you keep the, the stakeholders and the private entities engaged in the process, but then remove them from the tactical plan. That, that is basically your job, right, to develop a, or. Staff job.
So what does that look like, does that mean the town files for a permit independent of SVPF?
I, I think possibly.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
I mean, did Vince, you spent a lot of time. Working with. The other entities, oh, to, to bring the, the latest version forward that ultimately got disbanded but, or abandoned. What, how did you find? That sort of cooperation? Sorry, that's kind of a mean question.
SBPF.
SBPF.
So I was tasked with working with SBPF to develop the NOI. I had. A bit of a, a, a job at my hands, we got there, we negotiated out some pretty. Um, difficult times, one of the things that was most beneficial to me throughout the process was. I had said that I don't, I, I don't really want this to go anywhere until we have funds and based on undertaking move, which should have ever been needed, so that was in the town's pocket. The biggest blessing came from the select board that you came up with the same stipulation. And that gave me more power to be able to say, okay, right, if you want to do this. Um, and put the credit funds in place, we're not going anywhere, but working with them. There were challenges, but we worked with any group, it doesn't matter if there are challenges. We ended up finding, and what I consider in that NOI that was withdrawn, being extremely positive middle ground. That was beneficial to the town, beneficial to SBPF, there were. There were elements that weren't ideal, but show me an, an ideal document, they don't exist in my mind, there is no perfect document out there. But we did work together, we got there, we had the terms of reference within the MOU for how we would work together and we got there. We did produce what I consider. And what I think would have been a very successful, uh, project that was within the NOI, but that could have come with whatever terms that the Concom put on it. So we were wondering about that the whole way along. But we got there, we, we did work together and it did prove to be a successful venture up until they decided to throw in the input.
And, and to you, like. Uh, Vince, was this for the expanded project of four thousand feet, right, right?
So. No, wait, well, I think we have.
Quick, quick and go.
Yes.
I feel like this is an opportunity to use the reset button, there's now like, there's a thing, right, that's on the table, the removal, that, that. Creates pressure, Jason was talking about, you know, you have a long time before you're ready to do it, you have this. You don't do them until the last two or three. Right, that. In a way, it feels like SBPF's withdrawal. And the removal order put us in a spot where now we have to act, we have to decide something, right, there's gotta be. We're at the point where there's, something's gonna happen, right, something is. So there's, there's, and now what we can do is simply reset button, decide who's gonna be at the table for this discussion about what the future holds. And. Interestingly, this is a point about the requirement that we made that the removal funding be in place before we agreed to move with NOI. To me is a luxury of the people in authority set the parameters. And said, if you don't agree to this. Nothing's happening. And that actually resulted, got results, and so that to me is a luxury about, perhaps a methodology in terms of. The stakeholders saying, this is what we think makes sense. As your regulatory authority and your select board. You're in or you're out, because if you're out, you won't fund, you won't whatever, then it can't happen. Like these are the criteria on which this thing will, this compromise will move forward, it's, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Um. So anyway, it feels like a huge opportunity to me and it did, the, the moment they withdrew, it felt like an opportunity, scary one, but.
I think it's, yeah, I, I, I'm similar to that, if, if. If I could go back, you know, sort of three years, five years, go back in a time machine, I think what we would, I would do is sort of lay out. More, here's how we're gonna pay, here's what we're gonna do, here's how we're gonna pay for it. You know, you guys have till the, you know, six months to get this figured out, a year to get this figured out, and if you don't, we're moving on, because. Take SBPF out of it, we're gonna have this, these issues at a lot of other neighborhoods and what, as a community, you know, I don't, we can't afford. To not, like, I don't think, we cannot afford to go, uh, you just tax everybody for all this. Or, or we, we can't think that the money's gonna come from the federal government or the state government, it's gonna make, give the money to us, they're gonna give money to the bigger places, more, more people. And with more poor people that are perceived that way, it's not gonna come here, we'll get some if we're lucky, but it's not gonna be near enough for what we have to do. And so I think one of the main. Sort of principles we should be working on is that the people getting the benefit pay for some of that, you know, pay a good amount of it. And one of the things we lose if we go into this scenario is we have, people aren't paying any of it, the town is, you know, sort of managing by crisis and, you know, and it's a mess. You know, so somewhere in between, I think this, if I could do it again, I'd go back and say, here's, you know, we, we've talked to everybody, we get everyone's input. We'd make a plan, you know, with Arcadis or whoever, and then we'd say, you have some amount of time to agree to this, otherwise you're on your own. You know, that, if I had to do it, I don't know if that would work, but. You know, I think we could, we could be spinning our wheels for a long time on this still.
Well, we asked in one of the, I don't remember what group I had, but I asked the question, are all property owners created equal? And is there one plan that? Everyone adheres to, or, you know, are there some modifications within the property owner plan? That addresses some of the huge differences that may exist. From one property owner to another, I don't know the answer to that question, I'm just tossing it out there. Because that's the other thing sometimes we do, we just, it's, it's easier to put together one plan for everyone. But sometimes you have to have a couple of clauses in the plan that are managed a little bit differently. Something to think about.
Just a couple of points I've been saving up here that hopefully aren't too divergent, the first is that. It's interesting, considering to, I think a lot of people. Think that's a good way to move forward. But me and Matt see the idea of time versus triggers on. Completely opposite spectrums, I see putting actual time periods in place to be the absolute best thing you can do. Because it gives a defined planning timeline. Scientifically, is it a little like arbitrary? Yes, but in this environment, we have to. We have to not say like, oh, this trigger's gonna happen thirty, forty, fifty years in the future, or it might happen two months from now, we, we don't know. We need to have in this type of thing. A actual time period to plan based on, so I think the time is, is really important.
Just a follow up, I, I don't disagree, but. A, a little bit, on here I put time for the roads, I said we have to, the, the, I think the time thing should be on the town to get the roads and the other stuff done. And I think the trigger should be on the project because. And I'm not even thinking about it for the long term, I'm thinking if it's starting to do damage, we need to be able to get it up. You know, we can all pick five years or ten years, but there could be a whopping storm come in and ruin it tomorrow and then it's impacting down drift and we know it. And then we don't, and then they go, well, we have five more years.
I was going to say maybe.
So I, I think it's in between.
About, right, yeah, because, and, and, you know, thinking positive, you may put a five or a ten years on something and then all of a sudden a source of funding comes in. And maybe we say, ah, you know what, but we'll take advantage of that, but we're gonna use it for this project instead, because we still have another ten years on that one. So triggers and time, I think are both, I should be both be built in. I'm good. Oh, did you have a comment to make? Yeah.
Yeah, I do have a comment tonight. It was interesting when I read the judge's order, when it was. Last page of it, which is the page he signed, it says. This court cannot substitute its own judgment. Even if it were to conclude that the community may be better served by a compliance order rather than a removal order. I found that really to be interesting, even though he said, look. It can get pulled out. However, he puts in his order. Maybe there's another way, but that wasn't for him to judge as he stated in here. But it's stuck in my mind from the first time I read this thing. That uh there's gotta be a way out.
Yeah, it's the different, I would call him probably a constitutional judge. He's basically rolling on the letter of the law and offering an opinion afterwards, right? I'm not a lawyer, you did not get, just get legal advice or any opinion, but right, that's that's what you have.
Just respectfully, if I may, a couple of other quick things. Um, although I hear what Joe's saying, I disagree that the decision should be on the select board alone. You can. This decide if you love our system of town government or hate it, but we live in a commonwealth. We we don't, we're not a city with the mayor, you know, the select board might be a policy setting board or a policy advisory board even. But it's really up to the citizens of Nantucket, who are the ultimate legislative authority of Nantucket to decide. And we need to work together to take all interests. That we represent and to be the voice of those people to work together. I just don't think we're gonna be able to do it alone. I don't think we can do this decision alone. I don't think select board can do this decision alone. I don't think anybody can do it alone. And then in that same vein, you know, I acknowledge that the way communications happened in the past. Weren't great, but we did say some things in letters, and you said some things in letters that we probably both disregarded. I think that unfortunately, because the uh new N O I for the expanded project never got heard. Some of us didn't get to say what we thought was actually beneficial about that project. I think a lot of people think. Everybody on the concom hated every aspect of this project. That's not true. Uh, I'll probably be looked at as somebody who's the most critical of the projects in place right now. And I think there was lots of good things that were written into the N O I. There was um. Phasing that could could be adapted to be a very uh. Helpful strategy, there was a different um. Intervent or different alternatives in different locations. Um, so I disagree with some of the actual strategies that were put into the N O I. But I think context of the document should be revisited. And I think we actually. All maybe, or maybe not all, a lot of us dread the past. But this is a excellent opportunity. This, where we are at right now, we can look at, okay. We have essentially a path forward where we can consider. Types of actions to be sort of like a global leader. Like, there's all these opportunities for nature-based solutions and hybrid projects and. Uh, things that have never even come before permitting in Massachusetts. That could be used for all of Scotland, not just the current GeoTube area. But we never got a chance to tell anybody that, because the N O I just got withdrawn. So I think that if there's a new N O I. You know, we we told the select board what we wanted to see in that N O I, we told them in a letter, we don't want to see a expanded GeoTube array. Maybe that's not the best way to tell somebody what to do, especially after the N O I was. Uh, apparently almost fully drafted at that point. But we told them, here's what we're looking at, but we didn't get to tell them why. The and I I don't speak for the whole board, but my reason why is because there are. Much more resilient ways to move forward if we just thought about them, if we just heard them in a permanent setting.
I I go with the uh select board simply because they're the elected body of the citizens. I would hate like hell to go out on the street and ask every man and woman, what do you think about this? That would be true chaos.
Well, I do worry about putting it just all on the select board since. Ultimately, whatever decision they make has to come before a conservation commission and. Even if you completely change all seven members, there's still the Wetlands Protection Act that needs to be upheld. Being able to allow them the perspective kind of into the regulatory body, I think would be helpful. And you guys ultimately saying. Because you are kind of more in charge, you know, this is the path the town will take, but I do think. That that like this conversation and these things are are important to assist. Um, in that whole process overall. Ultimately, the elected officials are elected to represent. The people of the town or city or whatever, right? So the tho- those people who elected you are are operating under the assumption that you're representing them. You're going to make a decision, and if they don't like the way you're going, it's incumbent upon them to say that, right? Oh, I mean, that's just very basic.
An idea just popped into my head.
Duh, I love epiphanies.
Um, you know, because we do have like very polarized entities here, maybe it would be good for like the town. To come out with a back sheet. Of this process to say, nope. Like, you're probably pulling from each group, but say, you know, this is the year in place, this is what has occurred, here is where we are. The truth from the town or or whatever, kind of with both entities on board.
I was just going to ask the question, it, but is that both entities, right? I mean, it's it's a public piece of information, but is it a public piece of information? Supported at the bottom of it officially signed by.
Uh, I mean, I think so.
The Conservation Commission.
Your aspect of this planning process with your M O Us and. Road relocation and all those hurdles and we've, you know, had our situation and very rarely do we. Like, share notes on that, again, put something out that's. Easily digested by the majority of the public here, because all they see is the social media posts and maybe can't. Find the facts that they need.
Yeah. Well, and we talked at the beginning of the meeting and they can't find the facts that they need, right, because they've got, they've got the dog to the home too, they've got the kids to do this, they've got. The family doing that, right, you can't, you really want to be driving the information. You want to be controlling your story. Right now, you're not paying control of your story.
And there's four thousand plus pages of record just from the conservation commission's process alone, I'm sure you're probably close to.
No, not at all.
I was very disappointed that we didn't get to hear the town's N O I and S B P F's N O I. For the expansion, because I I didn't hear it originally, I wasn't on the board then. And it was gonna be an interesting application, because they did combine GeoTubes and car rolls and then some natural landscaping. But we've had mixed results with our Wisconsin Beach friends and Baxter Road residents and. One concern I have is that it goes from a million dollars plus a year to maintain what we have now. And they made it very clear, they don't want what there is now. They don't, that's not what they want. And they're not gonna pay any money to fund it. But if we permit a four thousand foot GeoTube array. Uh, the cost goes to five million dollars a year. And.
Does that mean you can find the sand in the first?
If they can find the sand, it's over a hundred dollars a cubic yard now, but that's that's the problem. But the problem is, I worry about the town picking up that five million dollars a year, Wisconsin B suddenly says. You know, I I we're kind of tired of paying for this. And it's it's not part of the wetlands bylaw that we have to. Uh, see the funding in place, but I'm a taxpayer in this town and it concerns me that we might be on the hook. For five or six million dollars for life. That's that's troubling.
And we talked about, right, of the development of a property owner plan, plan responsibilities and tactical steps. And many of those tactical steps are put in place to address exactly those types of concerns and issues, right? There is some that you know everyone has to shoulder. But then there are other things that maybe people, property owners shoulder differently. Doc, and then. I'm sorry, Dawn, Dawn, yeah.
Well, I was already said, I guess. This scenario, scenario two, is that really with the expanded tubes and and the N O I plan? Because if if we just leave the tubes in now, there. It's not, it's not protecting the whole block, it's just that little place. So that's kind of a silly scenario. So if we're really going to, if we're not gonna go with scenario three and just move the road and the houses and forget it, we have to. Do what my colleague was talking about, you know, timing, money. Probabilities, you've got probabilities of sand, probabilities of funding, probabilities of permitting, not just from the concom, but. Uh, getting the sand and so forth, and you start multiplying probabilities. You multiply probabilities, you don't add them. So the probability of that ever happening is very small.
Yeah.
So we can talk about how we're gonna plan it, but we have to look at the reality that it's actually gonna happen. And maybe just.
Well, we talked.
That we're gonna. It's gonna go to nature eventually.
Yeah, well, we talked in a couple of the groups that this, you know, we started out with scenarios one, two, and three, but the further into the process we got. It was like scenario one point seven four five with a hint of three, right? Oh, yeah, we, this, it isn't cut in stone, they're definitely going to be combined. Dawn?
Um. It, what's the feasible way for the select board to bring the N O I proposal? Who's gonna pay for it and run it? If we are doing it, and sorry, independently of S of S B P F, I mean.
It depends what N O I you would be bringing.
The one that we brought.
I and I realize that S B P F isn't gonna give any town money, but I'm wondering if like. Maybe other private funders or people possibly involved, could that be accepted as like a?
Gift to fund a project like this? But I think it's the, it's the same scenario as if they, if it's being ordered to be removed. It would have to go hand in hand with some extension of the removal or a further extension of the removal order. Otherwise, it's just.
And no, isn't, no, hey, answer. I was just looking at. Always be accountable.
So right now, it protects two houses on the eastern side and a hundred and sixty-five foot away. And it really, the superseding order condition from two thousand fourteen was to protect the road. So that was really what the focus was for the existing array. When Dawn, when you talk about. Um, the town backing a four thousand foot. N O I, I think that is a completely different animal from whether or not you want to have an N O I. From my perspective, to modify the existing array.
But we have no funding for the existing.
Well, you you don't have any funding for four thousand feet either, but the.
But if houses were protected, people would be more willing to fund it, or they could be better. I mean, just. Just speaking from the the financial way that we need to think about it.
Right.
Um.
And that's how we envision, so no, that's how we envisioned it in the M O U was that there'd be some sort of betterments with the people on the front paying more and. Less going back and they couldn't get out of it because it would be on their taxes. And so that's how we envisioned it with penalties if they did. And we were going to uh sequence it so that it didn't expand until they found a sand source, right? And that they were gonna give the sand source, you know, give the town sand at cost. When we sit on crack, everything in crack is sand, 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 all the natural stuff for Coke Two and Matic or whatever, required. Piles of sand, which we don't have either, and with money we don't have. So so it was, you know, we were trying to, we took a lot of the concerns that you guys had. You know, us not listening to you and not paying attention, and the problems you were having, we tried to write that into that M O U. We tried to improve it as much as we could. We we're still looking for input on, like, how else can we do it? You know, to make it tighter, but I think. Unfortunately, I don't think, my own opinion, I don't think there's any way that we can do this without S B P F in some manner. You know, I don't see. For some of the, just for some of the owners and some of the money, that's just the reality. There's a ton of money there. I know there's a ton of scar tissue from both sides. They thought they'd be doing this ten years ago, you know, or seven years ago. And, you know, and it's this scar tissue on both sides, but I don't see how we do it without. You know, with really tight, you know, tight handcuffs on.
I think we all agree that this is an opportunity to reset the button, right? Is there anyone that doesn't see this moment in time as an opportunity to hit reset?
So I wanna explain this. I think it is an opportunity to hit reset. I just worry that there's a current project on the ground. With no entity willing to pay to manage it, like currently, right now. So that's like a panic point.
Yeah.
With you guys, but it's like. There's literally nobody who's agreed to responsibly manage it and pay for it. And that's a panic point too, because then what what do we do when the road collapses? The inability to have someone responsibly manage it like shoots us to three immediately. And I don't think even S P P F necessarily wants that, so. Uh, it's just a very hard place.
So, so for me, right, this decision. S B P F made the decision to withdraw. And I've been receiving all kinds of emails from people in Wisconsin who are like. How could the select board have decided to do this? I'm like, first of all, clearly you're not paying attention. If you have a vested interest here, you should be paying attention. And if you have a vested interest, are you willing to invest your money where your best interest is, right? And I think that there are stakeholders who have been. Either new to the game. I mean, I've heard from people, we bought our house and you assumed, love that. I think that there are parties who might be engaged to participate in a way. With sort of a, maybe it's a different entity, but that represents a broader group of stakeholders out there who now get. That this is what's coming if they don't start paying attention and being willing to invest. And again, we get up against that, well, my house won't be protected. If it's not expanded, right? So why should I invest? However. I think there's room for a new conversation with with the community of people who are gonna be directly impacted, a larger group than. And I would like to move away, I mean, it's semantics in some way, S B P F. Or i- is there a new group that would represent a different? Um. Perspective or a broader perspective and that allows it to leave some of the scar tissue behind. Um, because.
And sometimes that needs to just be a completely neutral party.
And I think that we can say to some of those people who've reached out to us. Okay, do you wanna talk about this? Because the group that you've allowed to be your voice for this long failed.
Yes.
They failed. So if we wanna move forward together, we need to hear. From the rest of you about what you're willing to contribute and what you wanna see happen. And scenario planning, so we understand where you're coming from, as to whether we invest our time to even do anything about this.
Select board makes a decision, right, because I heard some people say select board should make the decision. Okay, select board makes the decision, do they make that decision? With. The support of the Conservation Commission?
But.
A direction.
That's fine, okay, but then it's it's a town council, so ultimately. Even if it's direction, they have to make a decision to go in a direction. They're in the same boat you are from a. Voting standpoint, right? Voting standpoint, right? Hearings before, like even with SBPF and like. Pre-planning, like to plan for that NOI where they said, well, what if we did this, would like kind of trying to gauge. The board, like that sort of setting to guide a notice of intent, because we can't say, yes, we're on board with this, that. Like breaks our process eventually, so.
Yeah.
Do you, do you, I'm gonna ask the needly, another needly question, okay, um. Select Board makes the decision on a direction, okay? Do they do that with support of the Conservation Commission if? One hundred per, only if one hundred percent of what the Conservation Commission wants is in that direction? Or are, is there compromise between the two groups? You would be surprised, you'd be surprised. Compromise tries to come out in notices of intent though, like, and we've tried that before in this area, well. If it wasn't. Four tubes, but two and parts core, like a lot of that flushes out in a notice where you say, okay, I'll accept that. Like that happens so much with project applicants that they, they curb their plan a little bit. And historically, that's not what we've seen in Wisconsin, so it might be, like, that's a good area for that compromise. Do you have the, um, another question, sorry, just for, just for the conversation, can, some more, do you have? Because like really what we're talking about, what did we call it? We're talking about developing acceptable standards, we're moving forward, perhaps to other parts of the island. Does the conservation, this is genuine question, does the Conservation Commission have the flexibility? To not have one hundred percent of the I's and T's dotted and crossed? Like, we're gonna go this far along and assess and then. M- move in whatever directions needed. And that's an honest question, or like, because you move from, I move from state to state to state, right? And we're working with clients on permits and what have you, and we have some agencies that we're working with that. It's all gonna be locked down, and you know, the Georgia State DOT needs ninety percent design. Criteria met before they'll give approval, right?
Well, I can answer as a, as privately, as a member of the Conservation Division, which is my fourth, third year term. Is that my experience is in the orders of conditions, if you're gonna dot every I and cross every T in those orders of condition. That you will have a lawyer who will decide that they can do something else. This is, I think, this is one of the problems with being a regulatory board. And how one is sort of tied to the regulations and.
Yeah, we're not a advisory board or a policy board or regulatory board, so we are unfortunately inflexible. Um, and just getting back towards, you know, this topic of expansion. Because I think it's important, Dawn, I do agree with you on the financing side of things, uh, it's not. Fiscally responsible to just fund the project right now, so either we're going to three or we're going to expansion. And unfortunately, because we never heard the NOI, some of these compromises that actually are. Talking about would come out of the process, no one's ever heard them, and I'm not gonna speak for the whole board, because I'm just one person. But I think, as I said before. Some of the things in the NOI were great, and I definitely support expansion of something. But I hundred percent don't support expansion of four thousand foot geotube array, there's just way too many. Um, negative impacts to fronting and downstream beaches. But if we go back to this phasing and this different reach model. And we really evaluate all the potential coastal resilience alternatives, Arcadis put some other alternatives in their report. Like offshore breakwaters and uh doing restoration, and there's others like uh oyster reefs and. Uh, plant, planting, and there's a whole suite of coastal resilience tools. And we really look carefully about each reach. And know that we might put something in that doesn't provide one hundred percent coastal protection. But it provides some level of protection, then at the same time, we can do this retreat. Uh, this managed retreat process and provide the homeowners some time, that's what I'd like to see.
Okay, so you're, you're already into the tactical steps of the development of the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're, you're, and that's where we expect you to be, right? Right into those tactical steps, because that's where our folks are, see, there, there, there's another one. She's already there solving the problem.
Way that I interpreted your question, Tanya, was, is there room in the process before an order of conditions gets threatened? To come in front of the Conservation Commission with a plan, a partial plan, maybe it's an RDA or something like, if you have to make it official, I don't know. Paperwork wise or process wise. Put the town or whatever entity come before you for a decision on this partial plan looks pretty good. Let's compromise on these things, you go back to the drawing board on these things, and then we'll fear it again. In your process and how flexible that, I know you're.
I say we can do that, but it's ultimately non-binding, anything that happens in that process. Doesn't mean it will actually go through regulatory process.
But it gets, it's, you know. You know, you never, you submit an invoice, you never want one person to look at the invoice, and then another person to look at it, and then another person to look at it. And I'm correcting it the whole way, but if I am developing a tactical plan for something of this size and magnitude. That will potentially impact the entire island for the, the. All of our futures, right, the foreseeable future, there might be benefit to not trying to eat the elephant. All at one time, but to actually work through pieces of the process together. Yeah.
I have.
And I'm gonna ask you to do, I am going to ask you to give me your individual. Um, opinion, and they are your individual opinions, not your group opinions, on what scenario. You would actually follow, and you're allowed to create one point seven two nine five, if you'd like to.
If we move forward, if we resubmit the NOI from the town of Antarctica and then work through. And we come to an order of conditions that, that we feel comfortable with. That has phasing. Can we make the implementation of the phasing contingent on financial participation of the stakeholder? In Wisconsin. In other words.
Are you asking from the con con?
I'm, I'm asking just from a governance point of view. So, so there's a set of triggers that would trigger phase. Expanding and phase whatever, or a reach, right? We have an NOI that says this is the way it will be executed from a technical standpoint and with conditions, et cetera. And the select board can say to the community in Wisconsin. We can't move forward with this unless you are committed to. A certain finding, make a certain financial commitment. To pay for it.
Yeah, so we figure out what's approvable, and then say, if you want us to implement this, you have to pay for it.
Exactly.
Right? And my, my concern is who's paying for just the permitting, because it wasn't SBPF paying their engineers to do the application?
Yeah, I mean, engineering fees, I don't know, but at least you're exempt from the actual permitting fees as a government agency, so you save a little bit of money. Little bit of money there.
At first question, we have people who like permit projects and then don't end up executing those projects, so that's definitely. A, a possibility, or they're like, oh, we had a house and a shed, and we only built the house and didn't do the shed, so, like. Our process can be flexible there, within the three-year lifespan of our permits.
Not a bad idea.
So in this scenario, what we're saying is. You as a community, so as it gets to wait until. This phase becomes triggered to say, do we wanna keep paying? But you're locked into paying for any phase. That you agree is gonna be implemented, right, and I don't, I don't know. Yeah, so, so legally and otherwise, you know, and.
You're not gonna, in the downtown, so. You know, we're, we're doing with this area right now, and you would say, okay, here's what we're gonna do in this area, and then. You know, and get it approved, and, and, and figure out what is the right way to do it, and then get it approved, and then give. You know, give the neighborhood X amount of time, here's how we're gonna charge the front, and the middle, and the back, and you have X amount of time, and if not, you're on your own. This is kind of what I'm thinking, because that's what was sort of in the missing piece.
Well, there is another missing piece, I may say, so, and that is that this existing project is sixty to eighty thousand cubic yards. And so I imagine that there is a neighbor to the north that is gonna have something to say about it. That a lot alleviates that maybe.
So then that, sorry, sorry, that, then that leads back to, we have to be involved somehow with, you know. So that, which is the hard, so you're arguing, you know.
It's there, that's one of the elephants. Con con and, yeah, the select board, if you want to go forward.
So you're talking about the creation of basically like an HOA. Right, the group of property owners, the group of pro, property owners. A phased or stepped approach to the permitting, to a phased or stepped approach to the solution. Every property owner must pay to get this far. And then after that, some do, some don't.
So, so it's a little like privately running water down my street, right? I and my neighbor wanna get water because the town hasn't put it in. There's a distance from where the water is. To his house, which is beyond my house. How do we split the cost of getting water to his house? Does he pay a portion of the part from the street to my house and his part? So it's, it's, it's incremental, right, so the, the folks who will be benefiting in the future have to understand. That if they're not investing in the part that exists now, the next phase isn't gonna happen. So there's an incentive for them to be contributing now to the existing piece, because there, the availability of the piece of pieces. Contingent on the existing piece being maintained.
So it's basically incentivizes people to sign up now.
Yeah.
Because if you don't sign up now, there's nothing, you're on your own.
It's not coming.
Right, you're on your own.
We, but it's a town, we can say, here's the betterment area, this, this is the betterment area, we're putting this on you. Thank you very much, I mean, there, there's like, there's no, you know, and, and so.
That was, I guess, my question, because if. I, you're calling it a betterment area, I'm saying get us to point X, right? So establish what is, you know, from, from where we are today to point X, the betterment area. Everybody gets that, everybody pays for that, right, and then there are other. Enhanced protections or, or opportunities or. Projects, if you will, that may come afterwards. I am going to ask you, because. Did I try again? Um, okay, so I am going to ask you one. On a post-it note, as you're leaving, give me a scenario one, scenario two, scenario three. And if you have like scenario two point seven five six or one point eight two five, right? You know, I mean, you know where it is on the sliding scale, so give me that on a post-it note, any other notes that you'd like to give us. Um, let's talk next steps, we have to go back and digest everything that you've shared with us. Um, we've been capturing notes throughout the evening, we have all of the notes on the board, we'll pull the scenario plans together. And uh, it's gonna take some time to digest this, do you feel that there is? The need to come back together, or would you like to actually see the results of this? And then make some decisions on steps that you can take forward?
I, I have a question about how much time, I know this process takes time, but we do have a. Uh, enforcement order for removal that's set to expire, so it would be good to know. How much we need to extend that by, or when to consider um, having something. To look at, to have a next meeting, because we do have to keep extending this. Removal order, or else it will be effectuated, so we need at least some clarity on the timing.
The positive about the removal order is it has forced. The planning for actual removal at some point in the future, which was a hole in this hole, so. At least we're working through that.
I don't mean to rush you, or have you answered today, I just, I just, at some point, maybe to staff or to the chairs. To have check-ins so that we know, like, when these next steps are gonna, going to be logistically.
I would say it'd be worthwhile to, to meet again, and I know it took a while to put this meeting together, but sooner rather than later.
Wasn't it next Tuesday that we were scheduled to reconvene, we didn't?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that becomes the question, though, it has, do you feel like you've made enough progress? That one week from now, you would actually come back and be ready to make. Substantive recommendations and get into tactical plans. I mean, if, if that means coming together next Tuesday and saying, we're gonna go with scenario two point seven five six. And we are going to begin to develop the tactical plans for that.
Uh, depends how many people agree.
I mean, I think, I personally think that there's far more to digest than, um. There's far more to do from, from a digesting materials and disseminating information to you. If you came back together next week, I don't particularly think that you would make a lot of progress, but I mean, that's. Yeah, I guess I was worried at some point, then.
Eh, eh, even like a, a vague timeline, like, is this gonna be? A month, two months, three months, so that we just, we just can know, okay, we're making positive progress here. Let's just extend this removal order until July or until whenever, rather than having to do it every single meeting, we've, I think we've extended it five times. Already now. It's just, it, it's just like, we need to do this extension a few less times.
In line with that, the piece like of. Who's managing the structure needs to be solved.
Who's putting the sand down?
Right, because ultimately, like it does, it shoots us right to three if we can't get that responsible management in place, like. As soon as possible, because we're unfortunately continuing to require problems.
Yeah, yeah.
Just me before May seventeen, because we spent a lot of stuff. Cause I really like, like, the, the tone of this meeting is completely different than I think we've seen in a long time.
In a good way?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, that's wonderful.
The one actually brought up in the beginning, was, there's a new scenario now, it's really. Con con and select board and all the admin working together, and some of the, some of the noise has been. Cut down, so I think some of that has been deflated, you know, I feel really good about just, you know, about this whole conversation.
I have to say, I feel good about it, but I get him, I hate to throw grenades, but.
That's your way.
Keep them in your pocket then, Doc, keep them in your pocket. Just don't put one thing on them.
I don't think we have enough time, enough money, enough resources, that we're gonna end up closer to scenario three. I'd like, I'd like to be proven wrong.
Yes.
Take a look at the NOI in November of last year. Because that's a joint select board and Baxter Road group, and there are a lot of interesting things in that particular NOI.
I would say it too, I mean, I understand what you're saying, um, and. I've spoken out in the past very vocally against scenario one, but I think in any of these scenarios, they could be done. Well, or they could be done poorly, even scenario three, which has a lot of threat or risk to it, could be done very well if we. Um, take the appropriate mitigation to, and, you know, work with the appropriate. People to ensure that process, but. It needs to be not completely unmanaged, retreat is fine, unmanaged retreat is.
So that would be, what is this? Twenty first, okay.
March.
March, first, yeah, March, March twenty first, um, second week of April. Yes, a window there. After that, April. After that, April thirty.
Done one point five.
Because we have one.
You can do that. Authorization for that, and the boss.
We're leaning towards days on eleven.
Same time?
Same time?
First people are part of the week before, right before you. And then I'll be back in the town, my search is.
Good luck with the second.
Returner politics.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, they can adjourn without a form, they just need to start with a form.
Also, sorry, Chair.
Are we, are we, are we, Robert's rules game? Um, all right, is there a motion to adjourn the Nantucket Conservation Commission meeting? Motion made by Mark, seconded by Ian, all in favor?
Most to adjourn for select board?
Motion for adjourn.
Okay, so folks. Is, and everybody take a gander at this. You are somewhere between a one point five and like two point two. The letting nature take its course was just really not on the top of anyone's head, so. Like, how?
It's what I was marching. Yeah, I think. Were we supposed to be meeting every other one?